Let's call the August 4, 2016 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. And if the Administrator would call the roll.
Bagelman.
Here.
Dane.
Present.
French.
Present.
Hagen-Sick.
Here.
Huser.
Olson.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Solheim.
Here.
Wilson.
Okay, you have before you an agenda? And do we have a motion for its approval?
So. Second.
Okay, any additions, corrections? If not, those in favor indicate yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, no. And the agenda is approved as presented. The minutes of the June 2, 2016 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission are in front of you. Any additions or corrections to those? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve June 2 minutes.
Anybody?
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections?
You know, you might, I'm just noticing, because of my huge faux pas, you know, that Tim's listed as absent.
Oh, my bad, sorry.
Yeah, maybe I should have been, but I think Tim truly was not appointed. I thought I wasn't, but I was just absent.
And he was definitely absent as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we're delighted to have you with us.
Yes, thank you.
It's a little bit embarrassing.
Okay, with the untanglement of the, yeah, that's good. Those in favor of approving the minutes as they're presented indicate yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no? And the minutes are approved. Ben, we've got some communications.
Yep, first item was obviously we did not have a meeting in July. We did not have a quorum. Everybody was probably celebrating the July 4 holiday, so we didn't have a meeting. Board of Adjustment, August 8, we do have two requests coming forward. One request is for a replacement of a detached structure that technically would violate the zoning ordinance. And then the second item, again, would be the size requirements as well for another accessory building request. Both are relatively unique in their own right, so they're going to the Board of Adjustment on Monday.
Isn't one essentially a replacement of an existing on the same footprint?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anything else that's come in?
I just gave you also the June and May meeting notes and minutes from our workshop, our district conversations we had, for those of you that weren't in attendance, so you could have those up and prepare for tonight a little bit to participate in the discussion.
And we welcome new Commission Member Adam Hagan-Sick. Adam is just recently appointed to the Commission, and Adam, if you would give us a few words about you, who you are.
My name is Adam Hagan-Sick. I graduated from Wortburg in December of 14. I'm originally from Wakan, up in the very northeast corner of Iowa. I took over Heaven's Best Carpet Cleaning from my former boss. I worked for him since 2011, but I took over in 2015.
Well, it's nice to have a new entrepreneur on the Commission, so welcome.
Thank you.
As is his wife.
Is she on the Commission?
In our travel.
A new entrepreneur.
All right, a new entrepreneur, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. Good evening, Bill, good to have you.
Thank you.
Well, let's move, there are no public hearings for tonight. We want to move to regular business, and Ben, if you'd give us an overview on the R1, R2 zoning district ordinance amendments.
Sure, I'll start it off. So, as we've been discussing at workshop discussions and previous Council or Commission meetings, our district, we're looking at single-family and two-family housing in Waverly, looking at specifically, how can we integrate ideas and concepts into our zoning ordinance? And so, what I've done is prepared a zoning ordinance amendment that would essentially create three new zoning districts that would replace the current R1 and R2 zoning districts as we know them, proposing the R1, R1S, which stands for R1 small lot, single-family small lot, and then the R2, which would be your two-family attached home zoning designation. Then within each zoning designation, walking through everything, so as staff, we gather up and we review what we've done. We also use a barometer of sorts comparing it to other communities, of course. And so, tonight, I would actually like to revisit the actual ordinance language. As staff, we have been approached by a developer recently, and we obviously encourage anybody seeking to build homes to give us some input. And in light of that, in addition to staff meetings and looking at other communities, frankly, the more you sit on something and then you revisit it, you have fresh ideas, new concepts to bring forward. So, tonight, I actually would like to bring forward a couple more proposed ideas to the ordinance amendment as it's drafted tonight, to see what the view of the Commission is. So, in other words, I don't think we're ready to finalize it tonight, but instead discuss it a little more and throw in some new ideas and concepts, and I'd be happy to share those.
Let's see, we have a document in front of us, the single-family, two-family Waverly provisions to replace current ordinances for R1, R2, is that the document you want to work with?
That's correct. We can just start off with that, kind of walk through it a little bit. So, tonight, starting off with R1, single-family residential district, again, you have your stated purpose there. So, our end game here, following our discussions, is we actually would like to say, what is the correct lot dimensions for minimum lot width for an R1 district? Now, when we looked at our R1, and then we go into the R1 small lot residential, the differences in lot size proposed, so for tonight, it was going to be proposed as a 95-feet-wide lot, and then it would, for the R1, and then 75-feet for the R1 small. Now, when we're looking at that and envisioning that, it almost seems as though there ought to be one more residential designation lot size that kind of fit, you know, around those two. And so, what I, my thought is, after discussions and looking at other city ordinances, maybe something to the lines of an R1, for lack of a better term, an estate residential lot size, which we would generally consider our largest detached, single-family residential lot size, I would propose it at 120-feet minimum, or excuse me, 100-feet minimum, and then we would create an R1, which would replace this one with an 80-foot-wide lot width, and then for the R1 small, go to a potentially 65-foot-wide lot. And again, the rationale behind all that is to say, should somebody want to develop property, you're giving people three different lot-size choices, three different housing opportunity types on each lot. I mean, it brings its own unique characteristics with each development, so...
Could you repeat those, Ben?
Yeah, sure. So, what I'm proposing is three residential, R1E for estate, is what I threw out there to signify it's the largest potential detached, single-family. The R1...
And that would be what?
100-feet-wide lot. We would imagine 12,000-square-feet lot size to an acre. So, you have a minimum, maximum. And, again, this is based on other community research I've done and conversations with other staff members here. Then the R1 would step down to 80-foot lot width, 8,800 square feet, so you have 110-feet lot depth. And then our smallest, single-family would be a 65-foot-wide lot at roughly 7,150 or 110-feet deep. So, the thought is, with city services being provided to all these developments, the thought too is to kind of curtail, to a certain degree, the extent at which services are being extended. They're expensive to extend and maintain over the lifetime of a residential subdivision. So, that was my rationale for proposing lot sizes and lot widths, and setting a maximum on the R1E, estate residential. That was just a new concept that I figured would give us three options for detached, single-family.
Ben, can you tell us the lot width for the new subdivision? I just lost the name of it, Omni Edition?
You're looking at 65-feet-wide lots.
That is 65, okay.
I think one of my injections here is that it would actually look a lot like the two we have here, and we're just creating another one that's smaller underneath. I think that was kind of the idea. But we had to be careful with the one that's smaller, because what we wanted to keep is if we're going to do a 60 or 65-foot lot, we would want to create so that we're not going to get the big house squeezed into a 65-foot lot, so we'd actually have to look at how we would do side yard setbacks, so that we could create a class of lot that was actually for smaller homes, as opposed to larger homes squeezed into a smaller lot. And we kind of missed that, because we got to thinking about this, and when we talked with the other staff members, and we're not, we're missing some of those smaller lot sizes that we intended to try to cover. But yet, we like the idea of a larger lot size, that is, the estate-type, which a lot of cities have. That middle lot size, which is going to be more flexible with allowing some attached homes in that middle category, you wouldn't allow in the top category. And then going to a smaller category, which was trying to, trying to get smaller houses on them, as opposed to the ones that, the example that you raised, and where we're getting the larger homes, but they're just closer to the lot lines all the way around, real close. So, that's kind of what our intent was, is to go back to maybe going to that third, and then having the tier approach.
What is our current R1?
And that would just have to be proportionally adjusted for the smaller size, to make it so that it can't be used to put the larger home on that.
What is the current R1? Is it 85-wide?
It's 80.
It's 80, so we really would keep our one the same for that.
We might expand that, though, to let, if we let attached family homes, then you have to decide whether you're going to let an attached home be on the same lot size, or whether, in that category, you might make it be 100-feet-wide in that, for an attached home.
So, an R1 estate would be anything from an 81-foot to 100, is that...
Actually, that would be more like the 95 or 100 and above. That's, the proposed one that you have on your screen, the R1 is 95-feet.
Right.
And he was proposing 100, I think those are the kind of the same type of category, either 95 or 100. And above is the estate size.
Which is a minimum of?
100.
100.
It'd be a lot like your current R1 there that's 95.
Yeah.
He's bumping it up to 100, but my thought is, you kind of have to look at your ranges of, the wider ones, the middle ones, and the smaller ones, and then you have to figure out where your cutoffs are going to be.
You've got 100-foot, 80-foot, and 65-foot.
Mm-hmm.
And so, something would be an R1 estate if it was between 81 and 100-feet.
No.
No, that's the middle one, that's the regular R1.
These are minimums.
These are minimums, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
My recollection from our last workshop was that we liked around 100, or 80 for that.
And that factored in as well. So, my thought in the conversations with staff is like, taking all that input, which is valuable, we're trying to figure out, how can we make that work? And it's one of those moments where you're like, I was looking at other communities, like the Cedar Falls, Johnston, North Liberty, other communities that are fastest-growing in the state of Iowa, and the reason they're growing fast is because people want to move there. And so, what they're doing is they're responding by creating all these housing choices and options. And when I looked at their ordinances, they seemed to make sense in terms of, that seemed to capture that very statement, Mary, was, how can we capture that sentiment? And I was looking at the ordinance, trying to figure out, what's a good model we can kind of use? So, what I did is I looked at them, so again, I'm throwing it out there tonight as an idea concept that we would create it based on that premise. How can we respond to that?
Because when, you know, I bring this up, and the first thing I see is the 95-feet, and it's like, well, that's not what we were talking about.
And I put that down, sent it out, and literally, Bill and I talked, and we're like, we should really revisit that, because it makes sense, and rather than live with it, move forward, we should talk about it tonight. We don't want to revisit this again. We want to try to get it as correct as we can, and hearing input from everybody, and kind of a sounding board, if you will. Does it seem to make sense? Does the concept make sense? And if you're explaining it to others around the community, I mean, and the reason we're trying to do this, the why, why are we doing this? Again, is we're trying to solve kind of this seeming dilemma of, started with, we wanted to break away this progressional zoning designations we have, R1, R2, R3, R4, R4 saying multiple family and single-family, and if you do single-family in R4, you can have this really small lot size. Well, we thought we should pull that apart, pull it out of the ordinance requirements, and plug it into its own unique identifier. For simplicity, if you're doing single-family detached, let's call it that, and make it a little more clear, and remove it from multiple-family designation, so the opportunity to rezone attractive land and, you know, try to frankly have no requirement of semblance of a plan at that point, would create some heartburn, I guess, if you will, if you're trying to plan a community and plan for the next step and next development that's going to be adjacent to it, too, so.
If you look at lot depths, the R1 estate is basically 120, the R1 is 110, what's the R1S?
110.
110.
That's our thought. I mean, that's the thought that I'm right now sitting at, I apologize, I don't have a formal document to hand out, but throwing that out there as a concept.
Well, and that smaller one, I guess I might think that that could be a lot smaller depth for a minimum, because if you're truly doing, where you're trying to put a very simple home on a small lot, you wouldn't require them to have 110-foot depth. You might go to, you know, a lot like 90 or something. I mean, I'd like to revisit that, we just started talking about this at the end of last week and this week, and just felt like, there's several communities that have that three-tiered approach. I don't want to go to 65 and have big homes put on it again. I mean, the R4 that we couldn't do anything about, but it seemed like it just doesn't work very well when you look at those.
Have you had any conversations with developers about this?
And that's what we're starting to have, some responses. The funny thing is that we invited them to give comments a lot, but it doesn't, we're going to have to reach out and invite them to come in, because we're not getting that until it's kind of at the last minute, and they're saying, wait a minute, wait a minute. And I want them to have input, because I want them to have buy-in, at least to have input so that they can't say they didn't have buy-in, or didn't have input.
You almost have to do some one-on-ones.
We are, we are going to do that. We just decided that. We said, it isn't working to invite them, we are going to have to specifically ask them to come in and talk to us, and probably individually, so that we can get them to give us their feeling. And we look at what kind of things they're talking about proposing, you know, for different kinds of subdivisions. Even the middle one, when you talk about 80, you know, somebody wants to do 75s in that middle range. So, the question is, where are we going to put those numbers? Because that's a big, those are big questions to ask at this point, because it's going to affect next spring, you know, what somebody's going to build.
When you say that they can do 75, it would just be zoned in R1S. There's nothing that prohibits them from going at additional increments, too. So, I think...
Except that that comes with, I mean, where our cutoffs are, it makes a difference, because it talks about whether we have...
Streets and stuff.
The streets, and so it does make some difference. And then, so then we got to, just comparing, like Ben said, to different cities that are doing a little bit more, being more aggressive about their different categories, and that's where we kind of came up with the idea that we still want to make sure we're doing the right thing here with our categories. And we don't need to rush, we didn't want to rush it, let's put it that way. If we could step back and look at that again, and have that discussion again at this level, and then we're going to continue to have that discussion with some other developers about what they would like to do, and then see how it fits, because that is relevant if they're doing that in other places, or if other people are doing that in other cities, to see if it works for us.
I guess I'm a little surprised that we're tonight seeing three again. If we want an R1 estate, frankly, they can do that under the two-tiered system. We don't need increasing regulatory standards. Yes, some cities do it, but some countries also do it, and I kind of think people should have the right to develop according to their plans. My assumption is, and I heard Ben say earlier, that it's very costly for the city to put in infrastructure. If I'm right, the developer puts in the infrastructure.
Correct, to maintain the infrastructure.
Which is really not all that expensive over the amortization of it, so I don't see that as an issue. I think two is more than adequate, whether it's 95 or 100, and the 75 that we had, I think is more than adequate, and making sure we have at least 15-feet between houses as we developed at the Commission is pretty important. So, I think we're just adding a couple layers here we don't need, and frankly, I think getting down to 65 frankly makes lots extremely small, and even though it's good for we developers, I don't know that it's good for the future of the community as a whole. So, I think the, something 95-ish and 75 are more than adequate, and to go to three in this estate size, I can do that now. I don't, I don't need the city to come up with a new zoning requirement for me to build an acre-and-a-half lot. So, I kind of think that we're spinning our wheels and trying to create more things just because somebody else did, and I don't see a great deal of value in it.
So, developers, over time, have, I think, had a lot of comments about the cost of land, the cost of the lot, and to build affordable housing, they need to be able to have more affordable lots, which would mean smaller. How do you react to that?
The major cost of building a home is not the land, it's the construction of the product. If we're going to, you know, really want inexpensive housing, then you'll want lots of trailer parks, because that's inexpensive housing. If...
But how does that connect to lot size?
Lot size, in my opinion, Kathy, I think the size of the lot and the cost of the lot, when spread throughout the entire cost of the project, is very small. And spreading an extra $4,000 onto the lot expense on a home that's going to be a $150, $170,000 home or more, isn't that big a difference in the monthly premium that the person's going to be paying to build there.
I sensed you were saying that a smaller lot yields cheaper housing, lower-quality housing.
No, it doesn't have to. It doesn't have to, but if our driver is, we've got to have low-cost housing, then it's probably not individual houses.
And I'll just chime in real quick with a statement, that I know one of our policy goals in our Comp Land Use Plan update, last we did it in 2009, and adopted in '11, was just to provide a variety of housing options. And frankly, our current code of ordinances, it just seems like it didn't really meet the spirit of trying to match what's going on today, and allowing different opportunities, such as attached, one-family homes blended in with a detached, single-family district. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? Each community has made that decision in the past, and each community is making decisions, and they are making decisions on that today. We've seen it, I've seen it in other zoning ordinances that govern, if you want to blend the concept of attached, or single-family homes by sharing a common wall in certain subdivisions, you can do that in other communities, but what they do is they say you have to do it all within a cul-de-sac, or you have to do it all in one-block kind of format, okay? So, I just thought I would interject that as a concept in terms of, you know, housing on a big lot versus a small lot. Somewhere in between, there's somebody trying to say, but I want to do this, because I know I can sell this, and as a community, do we want to allow that opportunity or not? And that's why we're trying to open that discussion up, so. And I appreciate the comments, too, about, you know, the dialogue about lot sizes and pricing and stuff, because part of the discussion is always, do you have affordable housing, which, you know, I've heard it also called workforce housing. Where are the jobs in your community? Is that a tool that you're trying to use in economic development to try to say, we have housing available, along with a job opportunity in the community, and it's always good to have people that work in your community, to live in your community? So, I mean, allowing that as an opportunity, I think, is a good thing. That's just my planning perspective, and following up with our Comp Plan guidance, too.
You know, another dimension to this is, you know, I don't know if this is correct, but I've heard that it's also true that younger families prefer less land, less lot size to take care of, as they deal with families and obligations and things like that, and their preference is to choose not to spend their time on a larger lot. And I don't know if that's...
Trends are pointing that way. I mean, every document you read, study, I mean, they usually... Trends are pointing that way. I mean, every document you read, study, I mean, they usually point that way. I mean, this is the, this is the millennials now. They're coming up, they're starting off, they're getting jobs, they're moving out, they're, although they're moving out later. They're called the boomerang kids because they go back to parents for a little while, figure stuff out, they go back out. But, but that's correct, yeah.
I don't think it's just millennials. I think the, even your older generations don't want to have to mess with the lots. And they're, they're going for the smaller.
I think, I, I agree with you in terms of, I don't think there's a need for a R1E. You know, it's, it can be an R1. You know, it just, the size of the lot can be as big as, as the doe or wants in terms of, as long as they meet the minimums. But I, I think we need to keep the R1 at 80 and do the 65 on the small. And again, because I think there's a need, and I think the economic development research that they've done, is that is the price range that Waverly needs more of, that entry-level house.
The only reason I think that, that we looked at three is because the middle one at that 75 or 80 level, we're proposing to allow attached, single-family homes. If you have an E, you would not allow single-family attached in that district because your intent is to have larger houses on larger lots. And so you don't want to just leave it unlimited that, so anything over, if they have a district that's 95 or 100 and wider, they wouldn't be able to do attached, the, the twin, you know, the twin homes, the, the zero-lot line homes in that district. But you would be able to do those in the, the middle one, the 75 to 80 range. You would allow them to do those. Because a lot of people are creating a lot of really good housing in those where they have less, they have a lot of house on, on a twin home in that same district where other single-family homes are located. And I think that's what, that's what we're seeing in other markets. And that's what we're seeing in some of the developers that are wanting to do different things here, is to bring those twin homes into that R1 district. We can't do that now without bringing it into the R1 itself. So you, right now, we only had, we only proposed it in the smallest district, which we have now raised up to 75 instead of 65. That's one reason to have the, the second one, the higher, the higher-end one that, that you can't do that in.
What would, what would a minimum lot size be then on a, on an executive district? Like 15,000, a third of an acre, something like that?
We would say 12,000, 100-feet lot width. So I'd give you a 100 by 120 lot.
So if we did, I, I just think there needs to be more separation, otherwise I think the minimums is, is what Marion, what Rich was saying. I mean, technically, you can just do it within the R1. You're just a developer and you can, you know, pretty much expand what you want and then limit what twin homes. But I also agree with your point, let's get the twin home out of it.
Out of the upper one, yeah.
Yeah, but I just think, is there a way to, if we're going to call it an executive, I mean, is a third of an acre?
Well, some people do 120 or 150, I think I saw.
Right. I mean, you, you can go upwards. And frankly, I was just looking at, you know, I shared this with Bill and, and I was crunching numbers. And, I mean, if you do at the 12,000 square feet lot size, 100 by 120, you're averaging 2.9 dwelling units per acre, almost three units per acre. And that excludes the required right-of-way. You know, I, what I did is I measured out, subtracted right-of-way requirements and saw how many actual lots you would have. And you're averaging almost three, you know, at that density. So then the thought is, is that too dense? Do you want it less dense? I mean, how much breathing room? Yeah, that's, that's a good point, too. You can bump it up to 150 and bring that number down. It's.
Well, I, I'm just trying to get that middle category where we allow a single-family and twin homes. I mean, that idea of where do you want those to coexist in the, in the single-family district? Because that's what people are wanting to do, is to bring those kind of homes into the single, into the R1 district. So do you, you don't want to do it at the 100 level or 120 level, but maybe you want to do it at the 75 to 90 level. I don't, that's what I'm, that's kind of what I'm asking, I guess. Because that's what developers are asking.
I guess I still struggle a little bit. I think it was the last workshop we talked about the twin home concept. To me, it's a duplex, even if it's not. And so I wouldn't care necessarily or wouldn't appreciate having my home in an R1 district, thinking I'm going to have single-family and having something next to me that looks like a multiple-family home. So I would, I guess I'd rather not see it in the R1. I would rather see that in the small one. It's my personal preference, just from, because I'm buying in single-family and it doesn't look like a single-family anymore, even though it is.
I think that's what we had, had agreed to at that workshop. And I think should be the standard that we stick with.
Well, I mean, what's the purpose of the R2, two-family? How does that differ from the twin homes?
It, it, it only differs in the ownership because if you have a duplex, it, it can be owned by one person. So by definition, it's a half rental or both.
But the thing is, I mean, zoning doesn't get into ownership.
This is the new type of, I mean, this is what we're seeing, though, from developers in different areas. And, and this is what's the, the newer way of getting more house for the buck because you're getting less land. And I, I, we're just trying to respond to what developers are doing in here and other places. And saying, are we really going to say that we're not going to let any twin homes other than in an R2 district? Because we don't even have that many R2 districts.
And I'm not really saying that. I'm saying I think the R1 small would be a very appropriate way because you're already looking at smaller lot sizes. I just, I just really struggle when it, it looks like a duplex to a point. It's different. To me, it's a different neighborhood feel from that perspective. That I'd rather see that in the R1S than the, the next level up.
And I just will comment real quick about, when we go back to infrastructure, I know that it is, as a community, communities usually strive not to create what we call sprawl. Sprawl is, everybody knows what the term sprawl is. And frankly, what it boils down to is if you give opportunities, the tools in the toolbox, and you hand them over to somebody, what they're going to create with the tools, basically the limits, that would be kind of painting the picture for them in terms of they know what to expect when they're getting into it, when they're proposing a plat, when people buy into a subdivision. They're going to know that from the onset. So it's not going to be a huge surprise. My question to you guys, too, is this whole attached home concept, it's a way to bring the house price point down. I don't know if the architect can agree with that or not.
It seems like it would. I don't have experience with it.
And it probably matters on the finish, you know, the exterior amenities, the interior amenities, because you can finish something out and you can build a detached $300,000 house, you can build an attached $300,000 home. I mean, in my opinion, it's generally how it's sold, how it's, you know, marketed, how it's, you know, designed. Like, you're buying into a concept usually when you move into a subdivision. Some people choose next to live to woods, some people choose next to live to a golf course, some people like the river, some people prefer a farm field, some people don't. But my point is, in all this long-winded conversation that I'm having, is that I think that with the tools, we can also include language such as from the onset, you shall only allow for, you know, attached, single-family homes either as a percentage of the entire development and you require them be grouped together in one area. Or they be, you know, on one whole block. So therefore, that's all you're allowing upfront. You wouldn't allow them to come back and try to transform something after the fact.
The problem with that is that you're talking about a special provisional use that have to be judged every time somebody's doing a subdivision. If you, if it qualifies for an R1S, but you're saying, but we're only going to let you do it in one block or one cul-de-sac or one space, you're micromanaging that from the beginning, which makes it more difficult to manage. I'm trying to figure out what category you would, that we could allow that to be wherever it is. I mean, if you, if you have an R1S and it's up to 75, and, and it's 75, at least 75 or larger, I think that's, that's the smallest category. I think it's too big for the smallest category. That's, I guess that's what we're saying. If, if we have an R1S that goes from 65 to 80, maybe that's the right category then to have as many twin homes as they want in, in addition to the, the regular, the, the, single-family homes that you have. So that's kind of what I'm asking is, at what category do you not want to have twin homes unexpectedly in your subdivision for an R1?
My recollection, shortly after I moved here, was the big brouhaha about somebody wanting to do a duplex in an area that had been all single-family, even though it was zoned, that they could do it.
No, the, the R2, wouldn't it, they were trying to change it to the R2 on that one. It was on the end lot. Yeah, next to a highway. And you should, you should see what's there now, today. If you, if you want to look at that.
But the thing is, I mean, we're trying to get away, you know.
Right, exactly. Try to get away from, you have a multiple-family designations, which, which allows anything from a duplex to a multiple-family apartment to a single-family. What, yeah, what, if you rezone it to that, what are you going to get? Well, unless you have a zoning agreement upfront, you know, that's hard to manage and limit.
But if you have an R1S district that allows twin homes and you buy in that a single-family home there, you know that you may be next to a twin home.
If your Realtor advises you.
Well, if you, if you properly, if you do your homework.
And if you remember.
Well, if you do your homework and you know what the district means.
Yeah.
Because that's what it does.
But how many people do that?
I agree that the R1S at 75 is too big because we're only going from an R1 now of 80 to 75. So to me, that should be, I guess I, it didn't click with me before, but that seems way too high.
How about if we put, like, like Bill was hinting at, maybe like an end, an end-to-size for the lots in our progression so that you can say, I'm an R1, or you're R1 small, but you have to go, you can only go up to a certain point.
Well, that's okay. I mean, I understand what you're saying there. That's.
So then you actually be very clear in your order and say, if you're going above 80 or above, you can't be an R1 small and you cannot allow detached, single-family, even though you want R1S as a designation. You have to go to R1, which may or may not, you know, allow for those. What do you think of that concept? I think we need to add that in here that would help eliminate that.
You want, you don't want too big a lots and sprinkled among other small lots? Because sometimes that happens when you have a corner or you have.
What, what's the intent? Yeah. What's the intent of our comp plan and our zoning map? And what's our goal? I mean, is that to help to react? I think it is. More anticipation of, you know, providing for, do we need a lift station here or more storm runoff accommodation here because we're going to have a higher-density housing here? I think that's helpful.
In the R1S, is part of that controlled by the side, the side measurement?
Yes.
So right now, it's at what, five or seven and a half?
Well, for a 65 in a R4, it's five. Okay, so, so if you're looking at the subdivision that's being built now, it has 65-foot lots and has a five-foot setback because it was an R4. It started at, because it was an R4 that we, was pre-existing.
Sitting here, that seems very tight.
And, and we, we think the minimum ought to be seven and a half. We talked about that. We agree, we all agree with that. I mean, I think that's one of the things that we are going to change for sure is to say, whatever, single-family dwellings, it should be seven and a half feet because that 15 feet is pretty necessary between two homes. Because when you see the 10s, you can understand how difficult that is. So I, I think that's one thing that'll limit the size on the, on the, on the smaller lot size because you can't, you have to get it within the envelope. And we can do other things that we can look at to maybe limit the size of the house within that. But it has to be with setbacks or coverage of the lot. In height.
So you don't have. A 50 foot, 50-foot wide house on that 65 lot, right?
A little less because of the seven and a half.
Yeah, you, yeah, 60, 50 foot, 50 foot wide house.
I just wonder how that fits with, I mean, in design of homes. I mean, I'd have to ask, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I'd sure like to see what a.
Does that even make a twin home possible?
Yeah, because they're sharing.
Oh, yeah, they're sharing, so they don't have.
Twin home would be easier.
Yeah, I would say it'd be 25-foot wide twin home.
Because you have, because of lot size, because you have to have each half on a lot.
Each half is on mine, so you have a hundred foot.
You just would be right on the property line.
Because that was one of the questions we had was, can you put the twin home on one lot? And we said, no, and they have to have their own lot. I mean, that's what we're talking about with.
Isn't that pretty much what we see on First Street down at Eighth Avenue? Though there is building a, a house, he's got the two garages finished and he has to put the other home on it. But isn't that effectively what we're talking about?
That's actually truly a duplex because it's all one owner, it's all one property. We're not going to have any lot line down the middle of that, those garages.
That could be what got built.
Yeah.
There was a lot line in the middle at that point.
So he's, he's 132 across and we required a 20, subtracted 20 and 5. So 132 minus the 25 would give you.
107.
107. And that's what he was maximizing everything out. So what he's going to do is, they're going to share one-stall garages and then they're going to have their end residences on, on, you know, opposite ends.
Aren't the garages completely separate, though? I mean.
Yes.
Solid wall between the two, yeah.
So that would be an example of 107-foot structure length with the shared. It's not big.
What's the seam is, what is, compare that to a, if, what's a R2 width?
Today?
It's 100, isn't it?
Is it? That's why I'm just trying to think, what's a, I don't have that right now.
Well, today, an R2 is 75. We would require a two-family dwelling today at 80 feet. So each half would, 40.
So it's a little bit, so you're smaller, for the 65-foot lot, would actually be a bigger.
But you have the lot depth to go into as well. You could do a garage and then behind the garage have your residence or do it reverse so you have, push the house up front if you, I don't know.
I'm just trying to think how the contractor would look at that if they wanted.
And, and that's why we, like Bill was saying, too, we, we definitely want to talk with developers. And I think we would gain more perspective when we ask those types of questions, too. What, what's your portfolio look like? What size houses do you do with this match, with this work?
So if you have a 75-foot lot size in your subdivision, but you want to put some twin homes, you wouldn't really make them have a 75-foot lot for each half of that twin home because that would be excessive because you've already saved the 15-foot.
No, I know. I'm just, I'm just comparing if a twin home.
But we have to, we have to count for that.
Compared to an R2, if you had a duplex sitting on a, on a R2 lot, that's what I'm trying to.
What I'm saying is, is if you have an R1S and you say the minimum lot size in an R1S is 75, but you want to have twin homes, you probably should make the, the, each side of the twin home be a smaller lot than 75-foot because you, you're saving that 15-foot in the middle of the two structures. You're not having that in there. So you'd have bigger lot, you'd have bigger spaces on each side. So you really should have a, a, a separate size for the twin home in that situation. That would be a minimum. So it would be mixed in with the others. This is, this is where we got to when people started asking questions about that, when you start bringing twin homes in. Because you really have to think in terms of, and, and you, you said this before, and I kind of said, well, how are you going to, how are you going to manage this? But having twin homes be in one part of the subdivision, so there's like three in a row or four in a row, and then the rest of it, they're not just interspersed within.
So explain that again, because I was going to question.
Well, because I, you, you don't want to have every other one be, single-family, twin home, single-family, twin home, because then it would look kind of funny. But, and you had pointed that out, and you have to come up with a mechanism to provide for them to plan those in groups or clusters.
You put it in ordinance form. There's communities that do that today. And you look at, I mean, I, I use Google Earth to take a tour of communities because you can see the development patterns. You can see the twin homes. And usually what you, what I find is, the communities I mentioned, your Cedar Falls, Johnston, Grimes, North Liberty, you look at those communities, look at their ordinances. I'd encourage anybody to do that. Because what they do is they really try to focus on, they want walkable communities. They want communities that have looped, you know, sanitary and water lines. And so what they do is they try to build it in their ordinance as mechanisms that they will say, we would like it done this way because there's more predictability when somebody's moving in or going to buy a lot.
And how do they write that in the ordinance?
Well, you can.
I mean, do you, do you say they must be grouped?
Yes.
In no more than three or four or something like that?
You could set a maximum on it. It's kind of an open palette right now for us. That's our advantage.
But how do others do it?
Well, I mean.
That's what I would have.
Go into that.
Before we move forward with an R1, to Heidi's point, I don't know, you know, to your point, two and then a single-family, two and then a single-family, and it just, it just doesn't make for a nice development.
You can do a mixed development, but, but you don't want them every other one. You, you want this group over here is.
Fazed-in housing.
Right, right.
Almost be better to go to a PUD, you know.
That's right.
Well, it sort of is, but, but it, if you're only having two different kinds, then you have to come up, have a mechanism to say you don't want them interspersed. And so I don't know how you do that with her.
That's why you go to a PUD, that's.
Well, we, we go back to plan unit development. We kind of go back to Rich's comment at the onset, in my opinion, is kind of like, where, where do we want the review process to be at? Do we want every single development to come before P and Z for review and recommendation and then go to council, which is fine. You can have oversight of, you know, pedestrian walkway accommodations. Which is fine. You can have oversight of, you know, pedestrian walkway accommodations, plantings, where the density of housing is, going back to the concept that I threw out there, you can do that. Uh, or would you rather try to craft an ordinance and tell staff to create something so that it kinda responds to that? Unless something that's ten acres or greater comes forward with different densities, then that might be appropriate. That's what our today's standard is. I'm throwing that out there back to you, Dave. I don't know where the answer is. I don't know what the other thoughts are, you know, the members. So my, my thought is it's not necessary, uh, but you certainly can. I mean, you can reduce the size of a planned development too. You know, from ten acres to five acres if you so choose.
Grab your mics.
In, in listening, my mind's probably changing a little bit. But I think that, um, in deference to Heidi, we do have to control where these detailed, attached houses go. And I think what we really should do is R one S should be the only place that they're allowed.
I agree.
And in the plating process, you can't have R one S next to, you know, here and there and, and everywhere. They're gonna have to be platted. So you, you limit those to R one S. And we probably have to go, because in my mind, you ought to be able to put that duplex type home on a seventy-foot frontage. And it's one, it's two lots. So they're thirty-five feet apart or a piece. So I think your R one S controls where, um, those type of houses can go. You've got your R one, I think that ought to be, I would say seventy feet. And you've got R one, I, I don't know that you need an R one E, but.
If you're, if you're not gonna have twin homes in the second and third one, they can just all be one.
Right.
So you just really finding your cutoff between the two, like we still are here. It's just the idea of where's the cutoff.
But you know, we're not gonna allow a plat to come in that's R one S, R one, R one S, R one, R one S. Um, so that eliminates your problem. And it, it, uh, I, I think you can do it with just two, three if you have to have them. But you just limit where these zero lot lines end up. Uh, because you don't want it next to your half acre, uh, lot and half million dollar house. All of a sudden you have a little duplex next to you.
So we, years ago, th- this community established eighty for R one. Okay, they, that's, that's where they set the bar. So what if you did the R one S just to be less than eighty? I mean, if you're talking about, you know, the, so the R one remains just single family homes above eighty, but everything below eighty could be the R one S district where you could actually put the twin homes. And then I still like the idea of coming up with some kinda language, and I'm sure there's a community that's done this, to say, you don't mix them. You, you, you've got to group or cluster the different kinds of, like the twin homes can't be interspersed. They have to be clustered in some manner.
And the other concept is you can do a percentage of the overall development as no more than ten percent shall be twin homes in the entire development. That gives them a little more flexibility, but then they need to show it.
But if you wanna do a whole development, twin homes.
But you should be up to.
That's just it. And then you, then you do R two.
But then R two is a single owner. So that's the difference though.
Yeah, I think you, you jumped something there.
I jumped something.
You're a single owner then in an R two.
You can do, well, okay, so R two can have twin homes though. I mean, it, it isn't.
We don't address ownership.
We, we can craft it so that R two stands for two homes attached, whether or not you own the lot or not.
The two lots or one lot.
Yeah.
But you gotta have, it's a little bit different because you gotta have individual, um, utilities going in.
Individual units, individual utilities going in each one, correct?
And you have to have a, a building, I mean, you have to have a wall that meets the criteria between, um, that's different than a, in a two-unit apartment building, which is what a duplex really is.
Party wall versus just a.
Yeah, yeah, with shares, water and shared.
You should have that anyway.
So then if you, if you did that where you didn't have the minimum, I mean, they could do a fifty, but you would still have it set that seven point five on each side is required.
I, I think any less than seven point five, you're asking for trouble because we've actually seen that homes are being built at ten feet. And when the developer is control of the lots and they're building the homes themselves, I think they're more aware of the leveling and the drainage pattern. But when you have, you know, frankly, different builders buying individual lots, you know, they do things differently. Somebody wants a walkout, somebody wants an egress well here, and what you have is this awkward, uh, challenge for us to have to respond to calls of concern when I'm putting in a window well, yet all the drainage is coming onto my property and they're only ten feet away. The window well sticking out, so that creates issues, so.
Yeah, but the same developers doing it, they tend to match them together where they're not gonna be doing that. I mean, they, and that does make, I have a, you have a concern with that when you have a variety of builders and building different heights and different.
Could you still keep though, I mean, just keep the minimum at sixty-five or whatever we decide and then just have it written like you do the R two? Where if there's a single lot or a shared lot line or whatever, that it would be this amount? Cause then you do get some consistency and, and you do have some standards out there that everybody's following. I mean, cause realistically, can you put a house on a fifty-foot lot with fifteen feet of it being drainage area? Or, I mean, can you?
Fifteen feet? No, seven and a half, yes. You share the wall. You could.
Yeah, but for one home, for fifty foot.
Well, you can, you see them lakes a lot.
Yeah.
You call those low-income housing because it's just your little, it's, it's like the.
I, I think we really are encouraging though, like a reasonable lot. So I think we could have a minimum, but then have it just identified like we do in the R two. That if it's a shared lot line, here's what the.
Here's what they.
Here's what it has to be as a minimum. And that way we're keeping some consistency versus this nebulous, whatever.
And, and I think that very question that you just asked about, is this, you know, is that big enough to actually build a house on? I mean, that's something we're gonna go through with the developers too. We really wanna sit down with them and say, listen, here's what we're thinking. And I've looked at other communities, again, you know, the ones that I've mentioned previously, they're doing it. They have developments such as this. Is it such a detriment to their neighborhood that they wish they'd take it back? I don't think so. But there again is, it's the flavor of this community too. Where do we want this style housing? And how much of it i- is in demand? And that's where I wanna hear from developers too. Because what's interesting too is this awkward blend of, well, people need a place to live. Where are they gonna live if they don't have options? That's this interesting dilemma too, from a policy standpoint. What do we wanna be as a community?
I mean, you're, you're right as far as policy. I mean. And when you start talking with contractors, you're gonna get a mixed bag, you know, just like talking with Rich here. I mean.
I'm a mixed bag.
But I mean, but I mean, I've dealt with a lot of different developers over the years. And, and some want to do just like what Rich talks about is make sure they have more of a larger lot. You got some that we're seeing just right now that's smaller lots. And so it, and it's dependent upon almost like the age of the developer too. They, they look at it differently. And so.
Really selling too. Cause they know they can sell them. That's the only reason they're building them.
But I, I take a look at this latest development, how fast he's sold some of those houses and those are sixty-five, you know? And, you know, personally, you know, but that's, but everybody's a little different, you know? And so I think we gotta accommodate the developers because if we had, you know, you know, uh, say the, seven or eight developers that are around right now in this area, you know, you, every one of them will have a different opinion. They'll say it can't be done on certain those small ones, but we know that it can. And, and so you gotta figure out, I mean, you're exactly right, how we set the policy. Because we don't wanna push somebody out of the community by any means.
And what we're trying to limit is then, so if we're gonna let lo- smaller sizes, then we're talking about the setbacks on the sides. Because we wanna make sure we're, we're careful with setbacks on the sides. We also wanna make sure we don't put all driveway across the whole lot. Because we want parking spaces, we want snow storage, we want different things happening. So that's why we started limiting the, the driveway sizes when we have a smaller lot size, because we're trying to get to that point. Those are some of the things we're bringing to the table on this is because we really have to be, and then we have to worry about street size because you have to, if you can only have one parking place in front of your house and you can only park on one side, then the other side doesn't have any parking places on the street. So that's why we talked about those smaller sizes, getting the thirty-seven foot street because you need both sides. So we're, we're trying to do this, and I think we're not that far off with this. I mean, we just wanted to step back a little bit here and look at those, those break, the break period or the break. And is seventy-five not small enough? And where's our break between the small size and the big size? I, I think that's our biggest question.
So what, what's the process here?
We, we would like to hear your input, which we're getting right now, um, on lot widths. Frankly, and that boils down to density, styles of housing too, but lot widths for us, that's our code of ordinance. I mean, we're trying to design a community with tracts of land which a developer can come in and platted out according to that. So we're trying to figure out what makes sense. So we're hearing that from you. So our next step would be then, we still, I still wanna hear about break points a little bit. I mean, just for some finality, that's where I wanna hear, I mean, for lot sizes. What, what do you guys think? If you're not comfortable because you're waiting to hear back some feedback maybe from developer on what could you actually build in this size lot? That's fine, but maybe for tonight, maybe just go through your mindset of what do you think would be appropriate based on everything you heard tonight? So that's what we want. That's what I want.
And, and then what we plan on doing is listening to some, the, asking the developers to come in and talk to us so that at least they, we've talked to them. And then we'll just come back with a product that incorporates what we've discussed and heard from you.
Well, I think your sixty-five and eighty that we've talked about, I think that was kinda the consensus.
That's where we started from the very beginning.
Consensus is the last workshop.
Yeah, cause when it really came down to it.
Yeah, but from another question is, you know, since you wanna do, you know, um, duplexes, we'll call them in, in the, um, R one S, why not just address the dimensional requirements for a typical single family? And then with a note that, um, two-family are permitted in the R one S. It has to meet all of the dimensional requirements of the, of the R two. And the percentage is this much or, you know, then you can get into those requirements.
Appreciate that.
Without being, you know, you know, okay, am I, here's the zero feet for this and, and all of those. You know, just say they have to meet the R two.
The only thing I don't like about, completely about that, cause most of the time it works. But the R two is intended to be a little bit different district in my mind. It, because it's, it's, you know, we, we are using that as a, you know, on, on arterials and we're using it to be, um, smaller. I don't know, more affordable housing because it's, it's, and it's more gauged toward rentals. Cause people build duplexes so they can have two, it's two-unit apartment buildings that they're building, you know, that in a line.
But you're letting it happen in the, in the.
But if you're doing it there, it's, it's separate ownership of each, it doesn't mean it's not gonna be rental. I'm not taking.
All you're saying is it's, it's allowable. You're not saying what the, the ownership is. You're just saying dimension-wise for the lot size and the setbacks, it should be the same as the R two.
I see what you're saying.
It seems like you can, you could control the location of R one S as you do with, with the R two by making it near arterial and collector.
And we could work that into the purpose, which I think we did, is just kinda generally, this is where we would expect to see it. So that could be a starting conversation point. Somebody comes in and says, I would like to put this here in this forested area. It's away from everything. It's kinda like, I don't think that meets the intent of our code. So there's this fine line too of following land use plan.
So our land use plan has yellow for residential. It doesn't say little yellow and big yellow. I mean, and if a developer comes and says, I wanna put R one S in this forty acres because I wanna do seventy-five foot, uh, widths. And you're saying, well, isn't that kind of better for a bigger subdivision? Well, we really can't, we shouldn't really control that probably because if that's what they wanna sell in that, in that particular area. That's, that's what I'm looking at is how do we, how do we say yes or no to, uh, the, the zoning of an R one S or an R one in that situation?
Here's a different one. My daughter lives in, in a town home. It's eighteen hundred square foot, three-bedroom, two-car garage, but it's too deep and they're all that way. And that's how they get around so they aren't having so much garage, you know, we're so used to always having, so it's convenient. So their driveway is only, you know, um.
Two cars?
One car.
One car, yeah. Well, I see what you mean that way.
Yeah, so it's just, you know, straight in, you know, so, you know, so that's another unique way. And so they get that eighteen hundred square foot on smaller, um.
Eighteen hundred includes the garage?
What's that? No.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're, we're seeing people looking for less than eighty to do decent sized homes.
They, they want affordable lots so they can build a decent house for them.
Well, they want more density. They want more density so they can get more, because they're spend, they're spending more money on land and they've gotta get more houses per acre. So they're putting them on seventy-five footers. And they're, and they're not, you know, you don't have windows on the side of your house anymore. You have windows at the back and windows at the front. I mean, that's, that's how they're being designed anymore. Uh, for that kind of concept of you're either in the back or you're in the front.
With glass block.
Glass block. Glass block on your bathrooms and your, and your.
On the sides.
On the sides, yeah. I mean, that's what I live in. I have one side window and it's on the back end. So. And that's what, that, but that's what, that's what's selling. That's what people are wanting.
I guess I like, like Mary's idea of using the R two for the attached single families. Um, primarily because it requires a little bit bigger than what the, the R one S does. If I'm reading it right, it requires fifty feet for the one family attached. And so I think it'll, it'll fit a little better. You don't have this giant house with just the seven and a half feet on the sides of each of them. So I, I kinda like that, that proposal. And I agree with the sixty-five and eighty too.
And I, I like those numbers too, except that I would probably go back to if we, if we didn't do that by just referencing R two, I would just go back to R two being what we have now and that's forty and eighty. I mean, it's, it's eighty foot a lot. And then make the hu- make the hundred apply to the R one S, twin home. Because I think we can let duplexes be a little smaller because we're still creating those in areas where they're gonna be affordable. They're, um, along arterials, they're, they're ones that are more affordable for people to, to rent. And, and that's, that's what, my intent is, is not to mesh the, the, the R two, the true R two, which is really apartments.
Could be the same or however.
Yeah, I know. It's just picking the numbers though. But I like your hundred for the, for the R one S duplex or, or the twin home.
Two side. Also, just looking at the R two, we only requiring a five feet side.
We, we, we can change that to seven and a half. That, that was.
Decided we needed that everywhere.
The moment again where, when you're sitting there and you look away from it, you go back to it and you're like, seven and a half actually makes more. Because that's too tight.
So we'll require that for all of the areas.
Yep.
I think that's appropriate. I don't see why it wouldn't be.
Is there something, you know, that you can throw in as you're doing policy here for drainage? Cause I, I think about there, where you live, you know, that's become a real issue, you know? And that we force the contractors to make sure, cause when you're gonna put that dense of housing and you got water, you know, coming in on each side. You know, I, I just think we gotta make sure there's something in the.
You know, when you talk about site plans like that and you talk about whether it'd be drainage, cause sometimes drainage is just, okay, where do you put? Where's the level of the first floor? You know, if, if you're talking about one developer, they're, they're building it above that sidewalk level, a certain, a certain, uh, height. And then the next guy comes along and says, I'm gonna put it two foot higher because then all my water's gonna drain into somebody else's place.
I'm the last one to build, so I'm going the highest.
Yeah, and so you.
A lot of communities, you can't, you can't drain your, you know.
You can't increase the drainage, right?
Yeah.
But it still happens.
Only a seven, you know, so fifteen foot in between, it becomes an issue. Especially when we have a wet year like we've had this year.
So, so let me ask you a quick question. Do you think something needs to be done about that? Like, I don't know, if you require the first floor elevation to be shot before the foundation's poured, I mean, that's one method you could do it. Judge it by street height, curb height? Cause again, the.
Window of opportunity between.
Cause once it's poured, it's poured. I just throw that out there.
But that's hard because then you gotta.
Potential remedy, but.
Roads that go up and down and you'd be really.
I mean, just because your first floor is here, it doesn't mean that you have to have grading up here. It can be.
Below.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're, we're not trying to micromanage any of this stuff, but we get dragged into all these disputes about water.
We hear that a lot. I hear that a lot.
You gotta be thinking about it. It's, we're gonna try to set policy. I think this is the time you gotta do that, and especially in these dense housing areas.
And, and maybe it only applies to the R twos or the R one Ss.
Well, we, we ask for, every new subdivision, we ask, we, we look for drainage plan. We ask for them for, for identifying where the drainage was gonna go, even though we really done, it doesn't really say in there that we're supposed to. We're doing that when people get housing or building permits now. We're saying, where do you, where do you intend to drain? We're saying, where do you, where do you intend to drain the water? Where do you tend?
You at least want to have that conversation.
We're raising that issue with them at least.
Before they pour anything.
We can't tell them what to do, we can make them think about it.
Or if they're showing a walkout where it doesn't make any sense for a walkout, you have to really talk to them and go out to the site and show them. You may want to bring, you still have your walkout, but you got to do some major reworking to get it to work right. So that's the time to have it. And so we've been more active with that, so it's going to take a lot more of my time, but that's.
Some of our flooding shows that, the walkout issue.
But you'd rather have that kind of flexibility in there than a policy like David suggested?
Policy's easier to enforce.
Except that.
And actually code is easier to enforce.
You have to create, creating a fair.
I mean, it's tough, but I mean, but it sure makes the future a lot easier if it's dealt with at the beginning than it is at the end, you know?
But this is where you go back to, in Iowa, you don't have to have an architect to build a house. Other states let you, make you have an architect to build a house. My father-in-law says that to me all the time. Only in Iowa, he's an architect in Illinois, and you have to have an architect to, to build a house. And, and you don't have as many of those kind of problems because they could get sued if you had that kind of problem and they did the wrong thing for you. So they are ensuring that you're, you're doing it right. Here, you can just get a bill, you can get a plan off the internet and, and go out and, and do your own thing, which is, and which sometimes happens, and so.
Unless your development has an architectural approval.
Sure. No, and, and that's right, that's right. And it's really how the developer controls their, their subdivision. Again, we, we're trying to get to just the minimal things that we can do because we're not going to try to judge everybody's building plans and the height of their, their first floor above the street and all those kind of things that we can't. We, we like to help them with that if we can, or direct them to the right people, the people that know what they're doing, to help them with those questions. But I, I think tonight, if, if I'm hearing it, we can go sixty-five minimum on the first and, and maybe eighty to stick with the eighty on the R1 above. The, the only question I'd then ask you then is, I've been asked to advocate for twenty-nine feet as the smallest road for, for one-side parking. Because the extra two feet doesn't really help with anything because unless you add eight feet for another lane or another parking area, it just adds more. It doesn't give you any more room to get around, the, the extra two feet. And the, the minimum at twenty-nine feet and sixty is what our engineer thinks is, is really should be our, our minimum as opposed to thirty-one and sixty-two. I just throw that out there because that's, that's the way he'll advocate and I just want to let you know that that's how he feels. And I think he has good reasons for that. The thirty-seven he likes because he likes to have a thirty-seven foot street if you're going to have double parking or parking on both sides. But he doesn't want to make that be the case in a large lot because you have lots of parking, lots of snow storage, all that. You don't need the extra wide streets in those, in those wider lot subdivisions. So I throw that out there and I know we, we kind of went from twenty-nine to thirty-one with.
Bill, what's the assumption on the number of cars per unit?
We're trying to get one, one, one parking place per house.
And that'd be a twenty-foot length on the curb, subtracting out the width of your curb cut, you know, if you were to extend the lines, so.
And if you have two, if you only have parking on one side of the street, then each side has to have two spots per house.
So forty feet of one.
So that's why that you, you have to have the larger lot size in order to get to that. So when you have the less than eighty, then we're looking in that, that thirty-seven foot street because then you have both sides to use because you're having the smaller.
That's assuming a two-car-wide driveway.
Because we're, because we're talking about the maximum for a, that's why we put the widths in the driveways too. Because we're saying, right now, we say R1 gets a thirty-four foot, is it thirty-four?
Uh, you could go up to twenty-eight.
At the.
The curb.
No, I mean, I'm talking about the existing. Our existing design standards say thirty-four foot width.
Thirty-two.
Or thirty-two, okay. We don't want a thirty-two foot width on a sixty-five foot lot. Because that's not going to work with your setbacks and things, so.
That's the maximum driveway width.
That's the maximum. We're trying to get the maximum, but the maximum we went down to is twenty-eight, right? On those lot size. And then they can widen out after the, after the right-of-way line.
So what is our street width right now for two-sided parking? Is it at twenty-nine or is that thirty-one?
It's thirty-seven for two-sided parking.
One-sided, I'm sorry.
One side is twenty-nine.
Okay, so when did we propose to go to thirty-one? Did our group?
During our discussion. I mean, I think some of the.
We were doing the math and figuring out, well, if you do this math, it's thirty-one instead of twenty-nine, why twenty-nine?
Frankly, there's some developers that have created thirty-one-foot streets in those situations.
So there isn't a standard across the country that you do this?
No, there's, well, there's, there's not a standard, but there's a lot of, they're in that range.
There is state, the state of Iowa does have a design criteria that your community can just adopt, so you don't have to.
What is that?
I think it's twenty-eight or twenty-nine.
I think it's twenty-nine, yeah.
Yeah.
We took ours down there in the late nineties, I think it was. I think it was in the late nineties that we turned around and took it down. I believe that's when it was.
I mean, the bigger, I mean, the bigger lot subdivisions, you have bigger driveways, more depth, you have fewer, fewer cars on the street. And all you need is the ability to go around once, I mean, if there's cars on one side of the street, you can, you can still get by.
So are we broken now at twenty-nine? Is that what we said in our workshop when we were doing this, that it's not?
It said thirty-seven.
But for one-sided though, are we?
The only ones that were opted to be one-sided in the workshop were the larger lots. And in the larger lots, we said it should be thirty-seven so that you have parking on both sides so that it is safer for both fire and ambulance as well as community happiness. The, I, I don't believe that my study would tell me that it's going to increase the cost of a lot of, worst case, six thousand dollars. To go to that thirty-seven foot width. And if I'm going to build a half-million-dollar house, that five thousand dollars is not going to stop me from building at all. When you have concerns about ambulance, parking, fire truck, I'd just as soon have them get there for the safety aspect of it. Each workshop, we've said thirty-seven. Each time we go away and come back, staff changes it to thirty-one.
That's true.
And I still say, if this is the commission's recommendation to council, then it should be what the commission says, not what staff says. If the staff wants to do it, then I question why we really need a commission other than a rubber stamp to go to council that doesn't listen to its commissions anyhow. So having said that.
How do you real feel? How do you really feel?
You're really no longer to go there yet tonight.
And Rich knows I'm not.
Are you feeling the gluttony of doors?
No, not at all.
Because I mean, I, I, I understand the twenty-nine foot because when you talk about six thousand for each lot, what, what happens when the city has to replace or remill or, or do a, a street over or maintenance? Maintenance, that cost is, is, is a lot for redoing those kinds of streets that, when it's wider than it should be. And, you know, I look at the streets that we have that are twenty-nine in town and I'm thinking, okay, you go down Eagle Ridge Drive, you go on Augusta Lane, those are, those are twenty-nine-foot streets. And, yeah.
How about by the old middle, or old junior high school on, what is that, fourth or fifth? What's, what's that?
Fourth.
Fourth.
I don't know what Fourth Street is.
Really, by, yeah, by making it two-sided, you're just adding the, for the other car, so there could be a car parked there.
It's probably thirty-seven, it's probably closer to thirty-seven because those old streets were, were done wider.
The ones that are twenty-nine, are people still parking on both sides?
Well, only the contractors. And that, you know, and that's always a temporary thing. And then if somebody is parked on the wrong side, you know, I've, I've stopped and talked to people and said, quit parking on the side that has a no parking sign. So I, I have to say, I've done that before and I did it with a contractor the other day and he moved his trailer and put it on, on the front yard like they're supposed to, so. So we do that, we do get some, we're getting some cooperation that way. And when you do have only one-side parking, generally speaking, in a neighborhood like that, there's not very many people parked on the street. And they're usually temporary. It's, it's, it's the smaller homes and the busier neighborhoods where you're going to have, you know, rolling meadow. I mean, that neighborhood is, the smaller lot size, you're going to have lots of cars on the streets.
But some cities go to alternate based on odd-even, then that gets, you don't have somebody who's parked there.
In front of your house all the time, yeah.
All the time. So forces them to go out and, and move that vehicle, which I think happens sometimes in, in some of our areas that.
I suggested that because we had that in Manchester and it worked out pretty well. I mean, it, it was, you know, the, you had to move your car every day and that was just fine. And then you work in front of somebody's house every day if you're.
Of course, the risk there then is that if somebody doesn't move their car, then you do have the problem of it being narrowed down.
Oh, yeah, no doubt about it, but that's where we got this police force to.
That's the revenue raising aspect of.
But not necessarily the car getting moved.
So are we really saying we're going to change, so the R1 has the one-sided parking?
Larger lot with narrower street, correct? Parking on one side only.
What we had been talking is whether twenty-nine or thirty-one is where we were.
Correct, yeah. I mean, to, to us, it's immaterial. I mean, I don't think anybody would argue that point, twenty-nine versus thirty-one. It's, it's usually the thirty-one versus thirty-seven, the extra parking lane on the other side. That's been discussed by Rich and, and a couple others during our workshop meetings. And I know talking with our engineer on that and just looking at the developments and factoring in, you know, the aspect of should the city have to replace that or pile the road? What makes the more sense? And so for us, for larger lots, you've gone longer roadways. And I've heard from our engineer, it usually takes, you know, an extra trip to go and clear the snow off. Or it takes an extra cost to maintain that extra lane for parking. So, and how often is it used for parking? I don't know that. I don't live, you know, where it, it may be an issue or not an issue, but, so I think it's just brought up so that it's discussed. And frankly, how does all the other members feel about that?
The developer could do thirty-seven.
They certainly can.
Restricting them from that and they don't have two-sided parking.
We don't say yet, you can only go up to, we're just saying we want a minimum of this though.
Although we, we, we would probably have a maximum. We probably wouldn't go over thirty-seven. Because thirty-seven's our arterial to, or not arterial, but our collector streets.
Correct.
This isn't restricting the developer from doing two-sided streets with thirty-seven.
At least to go up to thirty-seven, right?
So they still have that ability.
They still have that ability.
I don't think you'd see many go there.
Yeah, they don't want to spend the money.
You won't see the thirty-seven.
But if you, but if you have sixty-five-foot lots, you'd sure like to see the thirty-seven.
But it's a lot easier, I would think, for an emergency vehicle to have only parking on one side. They've only got one vehicle to be watching for as they're going through too. I mean, you could check with them on that, but you've got that whole side clear and you could work with it just as easy. When you have that other car, you've got people coming both directions and doing some other things too.
It's the same space probably.
Yeah, it really is because the six-foot is that other car that potentially is there.
If we can only guarantee that they're never parked on the wrong side, right?
Before we move on with this, we talked about involving some of the developers in the dialogue. What, what would constitute a reasonable representative view from them? In other words, there, there are quite a few developers in the area, but how many would you want to talk with as a minimum in order to think you had a representative view?
We're going to reach out to about six.
Basically, there are developments in town today that are platted that have vacant lots and we've mapped them out. We're going to talk to those developers.
We're hoping to see, I mean, there's six or, there's six really active and we could have a couple more that we would reach out to and if they want to come in, we'll talk to them too. We're not going to turn anybody down. So we just want to make sure that we give them the opportunity to come in and talk into us individually or as a, as a group staff. We'd like to bring it back next month. Hopefully, maybe for sure next month for you to look at again. Although I'd like to get it out to you to look at and get your feedback individually. And then we can decide whether we can just bring it back for a vote at, at another time. Because if we don't make that many changes to it, except for what we talked about today.
Well, the plan would be to try to get it to the city after our September meeting. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I think October is, was, my goal is, it was probably by November to have it to them.
So maybe do a final review at the September meeting and then go for a decision in, yeah. Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't want to put in much extra work into this, but it's kind of hard to visualize. So could we almost spreadsheet it where it's almost like the current R1 district, the proposed R1S? And then lot size, everything as you go across?
Sure.
I want graphics.
Yes, Kate.
My drawings aren't very good.
So how do we, how do we reconcile some of the things that, as a council, to make sure that we're all on the same page? So for instance, again, that thirty-one feet, if the engineer's saying, well, you know, if it's currently twenty-nine, the engineer is saying it should be twenty-nine. And we're saying thirty-one, are we all saying thirty-one or are we all saying twenty-nine or how about?
You say thirty-one, I'm putting thirty-one down in your proposal.
But how do we reconcile that as a, as a commission though? Because we don't necessarily vote on those individual things, how do, how do you?
Well, you can always do a roll call vote as a chair. He can call it and say, you know, if this is something we can't get over, to settle it, usually you can do that as a proceed.
If, if you vote a particular thing and we put thirty-one down as the one-side parking, it's just going to go in that way if you voted in. I mean, if you vote, recommend that particular version, but then the council may ask questions. And, and our engineer may just say, you know, but I didn't, I don't, I don't think thirty-one's the right number, it should be twenty-nine. I mean, he may be the one that says that and they may follow that.
And, and I do my best to capture the statements and the reasons and, you know, like Rich voicing this sentiment of it should be thirty-seven because it makes sense to be consistent for all the subdivisions. I know that was said. That way it's consistent, there's no doubt about it. Every street's thirty-seven. Seems simple, seems reasonable, except when you factor in the engineer is advising, we don't want to have to maintain that extra lane, you know? So, I mean, it's just a matter of frankly, what's recommended and what's the long-term benefit of doing that too.
I don't understand the numbers, to be honest. If it's thirty-seven and twenty-nine, say you have a ten-foot parking lane, and a twenty-nine foot, you have nineteen feet of path. Whoops, sorry.
It's eight-foot parking lanes what we generally look at.
Well, still, it doesn't, it doesn't make any difference.
Twenty-one and then you have, well.
If it's eight.
I don't have my, I don't have my little drawing for it because I have one of those side drawings about how you do the roadway and what, how much is curb and how much is? Yeah, it's, um. So for a thirty-one-foot street, you have fifteen and a half foot to the curb, you got a half foot at the curb, you got ten and a half foot in your, uh, to the sidewalk and then you have four foot at the sidewalk and then one foot.
So it does make a difference, it's eight and eight.
Yeah, it's eight, yeah.
So it's twenty-one feet of moving vehicle path.
Yeah.
Do you think you have enough questions that the commission has posed so you yourselves can ask the developers? I mean, sometimes I think, and I don't know whether I'd like this or not, it'd almost be nice to have the developers come in here so everybody could ask their questions.
We've invited them. I have personally invited them.
But I, I don't think they'll come, you know?
No, they want to do it with us.
Yeah, so, but I mean, but I mean, so I just want to make sure that every question that the commission would have to be able to, for you to ask, you know?
We've asked you all the same questions and, and we've heard responses from you. So I mean, I think it's, and, and we'll just find out what we hear from them, what they want to do.
But it's easier to do that one-on-one than it is in a hall.
That's right.
I mean, they, they are competitive.
And they don't always want everybody to know what they're, what they're advocating for and that's okay, we're, we're going to keep it that way.
Which area found and which size lots.
But we'll keep it that way. I mean, it's, we want to have feedback and we want to get a consensus. We don't necessarily want to get all agreed. I mean, we're not going to get all agree, I, I, I got everybody here and everybody there, not going to agree on one thing. There's going to be some things that we don't agree on, but we can find a consensus on what we can do.
Well, their agenda is different than ours anyway.
That's right, that's right, yeah, that's right. Sometimes you have to have some control.
Is there any other requests of staff that maybe we haven't addressed with this version? And then us presenting the new concepts tonight, which we thoroughly discussed and I greatly appreciate that. Is there anything else? You guys are looking at this because I think we've hammered out aside from the street width, we've looked at, you know, driveway width. We don't really plan on changing those. Basically, we don't plan on changing hardly any of the other items we've discussed in workshops except for, you know, the lot width question where we're playing single-family attached. Is there anything else we're missing?
Side yards.
What's that?
Side yard, seven and a half, not five.
Yeah, we're changing that.
So we will change that, yeah. So side yard, seven and a half.
We'd like to get out a draft of what we're hearing tonight to you to look at so that you can give. so that you can give us comments back directly.
Yep, so.
Not, not reply all, but.
So I can send it out via email if you think that'll work, um.
I, I think we'll, we'll probably do that at some point.
And just if we, we can include some drafted language on kind of that, unless we're going away from that twin home, um, and we're going just to the R2. I might've got lost in that conversation of, are we including it in R1 or are we just gonna keep it R2?
I think we're gonna keep different language because I think they may be different numbers. I mean, we're still gonna look at that, whether we go back to the forty, eighty on the eighty-foot on the R2 and then go to the hundred on the R1S. Because that would be the difference between the two.
Okay, good, good discussion.
And you always got the PUD that you can do it in.
Well, that doesn't give you a lot because that has to be ten acres. Now, it's okay on a ten acre.
But I mean, but if you're on a development, but you could still put the twin homes in a, in a, uh, in a PUD if you wanted to too. So I mean, you still got those options.
We still have the ten-acre minimum. So unless you wanna do ten acres of two blocks.
And I'm gonna try to come up with some language for the idea of clustering in an R1S so that you're not doing every other type. I mean, I think there's some language you should be able to come up.
There are some good examples out there and Bill and I can, he's, he's the work smith. I can find the examples and say, I think this'll work.
Do we do the PUD at five acres?
We're talking about going down actually to three, right? There's some people that go three and some people that go five, some cities that go both. Um, and, 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 but keep in mind, for, for me, a PD is, is to allow you to do a, a more than one zoning in one request. It isn't necessarily to create hybrid type.
So in other words, it'd be an overlay district on top of our current zoning designation. So you would have your allowable uses and housing styles within each respective zoning. You could then encompass an area so that it's not, in other words, if it looks awkward, it might be considered spot zoning and why are you doing one block this, one block right next to that? You can do that with a planned development request to say, I'm gonna assemble these zoning districts in this fashion. Here's how the roadways would work. Here's how they would interact. Here's where screenings would go.
We're just gonna, we're, you know.
But that'll be a different discussion after we get through our single-family and two-family and then we'll progress to.
But we've pushed developers to plan developments that only had one style of housing in it too.
And that was a, that was an effort that has, we've, we're learning from.
I know, that's why, but I mean, we have.
Negatively and positively.
The city, I should say, city has, you know, in the, um,
That's true.
Staff has pushed that to.
We can look at examples, yep.
Yeah, we, we'd like to look at that and see how we can tweak that too though. For that reason.
Some of that mix we're talking about though can be achieved with COVACAX so that you have a a small area with like and similar and then the other, I think to satisfy what Heidi was talking about.
We'll work on that.
So what do you want for action on this? Do we table this? Do we reject it? Do we do nothing?
There's, there's nothing on the floor except discussion and.
We'll come back with the, with the new, with the somewhat revisions in this.
But, but expect something by email well prior to our meeting so there's and they're available to talk, uh, before the meeting. That's good. Well, let's move to item number two under regular business, like county subdivision review for subdivision within two miles of Waverly city limits. You have an exhibit that comes with this multi-page exhibit. Bremer County zoning has received two separate requests for land subdivision within two miles of the Waverly city limits. The planning and zoning commission of the city of Waverly will comment on the proposed, will comment or not on the proposed land subdivision request and a report will be made to the Bremer County zoning office for further review. There are two proposed subdivisions of land for parcels D and E within Heartlands Hills subdivision. This area is located on the northwest corner of US Highway two eighteen and two-hundred-and-fiftieth Street, approximately one-half mile south of Waverly city limits. There are no immediate city plans to furnish city services to this area. The area is located within the potential annexation area of the Waverly future land use plan. And, uh, if there are comments, we'll pass them on to the county, but let's just go around and see if there are any. You've got the documents in front of you.
Can we take action or make recommendations since that was not part of the, uh, published agenda?
Well, I amended the agenda and I placed this item in here less than one week in advance. But I don't see why we couldn't. It's really, I did post it in the lobby at least twenty-four hours in advance.
Yeah, I think it's posted.
I, we posted it. It wasn't as part of the original agenda that made it to the newspaper. It was posted in the lobby at least two, three days in advance.
The city attorney's happy on that.
So I, I think.
For those of you who don't understand why this is happening is because we don't have a 20AD agreement anymore with the county about judging because we've proposed something and it's just, we keep going back and forth and we haven't gotten there. So we have the ability within two miles to comment on anything that comes up. And so we're gonna get these occasionally now that we used to not get because we had zones before that we saw, we told them that anything in these zones, we don't care. We're not, we don't need to be reviewing these. So now we're gonna get these questions that come up until we get that agreement done. Which hopefully we can work on it this year. Or next year.
So are there any comments that we want to forward to the county?
Heartland Hills, about the, uh, the radar.
The old radar base.
Radar base, yeah.
Do we even know what, what the proposal is? The proposal is they're, they're gonna carve off some land. I anticipate they're gonna sell it for a house. Talking with the Bremer County Administrator McKenzie, he was telling me that he thinks, well, it's, it's, it's objective, but what they're doing is they're creating one eleven-acre parcel out of thirty-nine acres. And so they imagine selling that, I would assume. And then they created an easement around Heartland Hills so that the person in the house that's right there next to parcel B doesn't have to buzz himself in to go through the gate every time. So he decided to create an easement, just drive around their little subdivision there, so. There's a little buzzer gate to get in that area, I guess. That's how he described it to me. And so that's essentially why. And then parcel E is just to, uh, sell off from Heartland Hills. They decided they didn't really need that area anymore, so they're selling it to the adjacent property or to the west.
And this is not an area that we have ever marked as having any interest in, um, potentially annexing or.
I mean, parcel E, well, Habitat for Humanity is working on that unit five oh nine right now. It's being built. And they really, that parcel E, they really need to keep it as the park area that it is.
Go talk to the, or go.
I'm looking at.
I can note that in their comments.
I mean, you know.
That it may be better served to leave as, as the original area.
Because along that whole line that, if, if you're looking at sheet number five out of six, that west, that west line, um, it's all trees. It's heavy, heavily treeed. And the same thing with, uh, that south. Yeah. It's all heavy trees right now, which is really nice for those people that are living in five-eleven and will be in five-oh-nine. It's not really big enough to do anything else with it.
About other comments? Well, hearing none? Then if you'll forward that one, the one comment?
Okay, I can do that. Thank you for your comments.
Any old business? Any new business? Somebody's gotta say the magic words. Thank you. Thank you, David.